Good to go, Beth. I'd like to call the order. The Wednesday, April 27th, regular Town Council meeting. Can we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, item number three on our agenda is Resolution 2022-04-27, recognizing retired town employee.
Do roll call.
I'm sorry, roll call. Thank you.
Mike Aurelio.
Here.
Brian Blazak.
Present.
Wayne Pandinos.
Present.
Michael Schilling.
Here.
Gerald Swet.
Here.
Joe Wizwati.
Present.
David Westland.
Present.
And Beth Hernandez, present.
Okay, so we have a quorum. All right, item number three is Resolution 2022-04-27, recognizing retired town employee Mick Zuccarelli. So, whereas the Town Council and the residents of the town of St. John are pleased to honor Mick Zuccarelli and his recent retirement from the Public Works Department, whereas Mick Zuccarelli reported to work on July 26, 2006, and served the residents of St. John until April 1, 2022, serving 15 years and 8 months. Whereas Mick Zuccarelli has been a lifelong resident of the region, is married to his wife Tina, they have three sons, Michael Jr., Dominic, and Tyler, and grandchildren. And whereas he has spent many years plowing snow, patching potholes, and worked down in the trenches with his fellow crew in order to ensure that the town of St. John would continue to be a better community, for this, we are grateful. And he has earned many happy years ahead of him, enjoying fully his retirement playing golf, donning scarves in the winter, and enjoying a home run in pizza from time to time. Now therefore be it resolved by the Town Council of the town of St. John, Lake County, Indiana, as follows: Town Council hereby recognizes Mick Zuccarelli for his exemplary devotion to duty, focus, and drive, and honor Mick on the occasion of his retirement, with many years of happiness and a home filled with love with his family and friends that he so richly deserves. Number two, that a copy of the resolution shall be presented to Mick Zuccarelli on behalf of a grateful community. And section three, that this resolution shall take effect and be in full force and effect from and after its approval and passage by the Town Council of the town of St. John, Lake County, Indiana, in conformance with applicable law. May I have a motion to approve Resolution 2022-04-27?
Make a motion.
I'll second.
Thank you, Mike. Thank you, Wayne. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose say nay. That is approved five to zero. I would ask Mick to come forward if you make a presentation. Okay. Item number four, Resolution 2022-04-27A, recognizing the Lake Central Centrolets. Whereas the Town Council and residents of the town of St. John, Lake County, Indiana, are pleased to honor the Lake Central High School Centrolets on earning a National Dance Alliance Grand Championship this season. This is the 18th year of earning a championship at Nationals since 1995. And whereas the Centrolets earned their 26th consecutive state championship and have won 50 state titles overall in jazz, hip-hop, and palm. Whereas each member of the Centrolets deserves recognition for this outstanding achievement, which will include the following. We ask you ladies to please stand up. And I'm going to try these names. Class of 2022, Alexa Edwards, Madison Galatka, Gabriella Grahlbeck, Chloe Hardesty, Isabella Holdren, Megan Martowitz, Grace Pena, Courtney Piera, Gianna Pulis, Lily Rogers, Gillian Brzeowski Frizzell, Vivian Denson, Fiona Hopkins, Olivia Aguardia, Addison Schulk, Abby Aladende, and Amira Youssef. And we'd also like to thank their coach or head coach, Kevin Mathis. If you would stand also, Kevin. Like to thank you and congratulate you. If we could all come up for a photograph? Oh, I'm sorry. On their way up. I'm sorry. Section three of the resolution. I'm sorry. Yeah, come on up and face it that way while I finish reading this. Section one, the Town Council hereby honors and congratulates the Lake Central Centrolets upon their national championship. Section two, that a copy of the resolution shall be presented to head coach Kevin Mathis on behalf of a proud community. And section three, that the resolution shall take effect and be in full force and effect from and after its approval and passage by the Town Council of the town of St. John, Lake County, Indiana, in conformance with applicable law. Can I have a motion to approve Resolution 2022-04-27A?
So moved.
I'll second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That is approved. We gather around for a photograph, gentlemen?
Well, I just wanted to, like, get it to where it, right, like, needs to go.
What's there saying? We are L.C.?
Now, is that, is that, like, cheerleading, or is that, uh?
Bomb, bomb, dance. Yeah, dance, I believe. So they're the dancers.
Oh, okay. I wasn't sure where, uh, where it fell, because there's so many organizations.
26 consecutive state championships? It's unbelievable.
No, that's amazing. That's quite a school of history. You gotta give it credit for that.
Unbelievable.
How long's he been coach, Jerry, you know? How long's he been coach?
It was the early 90s.
Really?
I actually was the coach at Munster in the early 90s, and he was there.
Really?
They were dominant.
How long, how long ago did Lake Central steal?
No, he was in that Lake Central, he was in the early 90s.
Oh.
Yeah, and he's been dominant at Lake Central.
He doesn't look like he's old enough to be there since the early 90s. He looks great.
Oh, well.
He started young.
Okay. All right, item number five is public comment. I would just like to remind everyone that your comments and questions must be directed to the President, speaking on matters concerning the business of the town of St. John. Each speaker will be allowed one opportunity to speak for up to three minutes. And may not engage in debate, counter replies, rebuttal. Public comment period will be limited to 30 minutes. I will run a stopwatch and just say time. I'm not, I don't want to interrupt your thing, but when you hear that, if you could wrap it up then, that would be helpful. First one will be Katie Walsh. Please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. Katie Walsh, 9063 Columbia Street. I'm here out of concern and confusion over recent events, and I hope to gain some clarity. I know this town has seen quite a revolving door of loss and displacement of excellent individuals, which has seemingly become a trend. These shockwaves seem to keep coming with the recent dismantling of our park board, and most recently, the halt in the skate park development. I think we're all aware of the political divide that's occurring, but I'm asking tonight, why? Why is this all happening? What is this all for? Ultimately, and unfortunately, the kids are the ones reaping the punishment here. We all want the same thing, community. It's saddening that many of us feel we need to go to neighboring towns to feel that essence. Mr. Aurelio recently stated at the last meeting, quote, "This is what the residents want." I and many others feel wrongfully spoken for on this. This is not what we want. We were thrilled with the modern rev that the Parks Department was producing. A community garden, new playground equipment, events, a memorial tree system. These are all things that are amazing, and a nod to them for making them amongst so much else happen over the last two years. Can I ask why we want this to stop? Can we please set aside our own agendas to not have this affect so many incredible families and children that chose to call this town home and continue to call this town home? With the recent light this town has been shed in media and news outlets, some are feeling embarrassed, quite honestly. Again, I hope it is known that the trickle-down from this is affecting so many incredible people. It's unfortunate. Mr. Swet, can you please offer some transparency into what is to be expected next and help us better understand? I hope this serves as a reminder of the ramifications that we're feeling as residents. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Tom Adamick.
Want to answer a question?
Oh, I'm sorry. Are you finished? I'm sorry, I thought you were finished.
The last statement I had was a question. My question was, can you please offer some transparency into what is to expect next and to help us better understand?
Yeah, I'll address some of the questions off at the end of public comment.
Thank you.
Thank you, Katie. Adele Robert? Tom, Tom said he was going to pass, correct? Oh, I'm sorry. Tom Adamick. I thought you said pass. I'm sorry.
Tom Adamick, 9401 Chestnut Cove. I have a question regarding, and I'd like to know the status on the 40 acres on 109th and White Oak. I believe there was a land swap where the town was swapping the fire station and the gates, the property next to the water tower, for the 40 acres. And I haven't heard anything on the 40 acres, and just like to know what's going on with that. I noticed a developer has cleared it out and starting to develop. So I want to know if we haven't made an agreement, or whatever, why is the developer allowed to develop property that we're going to end up, if we don't get the 40 acres, then we don't have a lot to put the fire, a future fire station that was slotted for that, that area? Second thing is, disbanding the park board. I was told that once you did that, the town is no longer eligible for any future grants to the park board. And any grants that are given, as of right now, any projects that are, that you have to forfeit that. Is that true? And that's, that's my questions. Thank you.
Okay. Dale Robert?
I was glad that young lady spoke for, oh, Dale Robert, 11990 Heron Lake Road. I was glad that young lady spoke up first, because she told all, this circus has got to end with the three Amigos over there. And I'm awful glad that Wayne spoke up at the last meeting that we did not get to comment at. We have comments that were emailed to Beth's office, what happened to them. Did anybody read them? Do you have any answers? We don't know. We're not going to see any change till November.
Bill Manassopoulos.
Bill Manassopoulos, 10011 Parrish. Just a couple of questions for tonight and a statement. I'd like to know what led to Mr. Slaven winning a judgment against the town, and how much, uh, how much he is getting. That wasn't posted on any of the agendas. And then I have a question and a comment about the new rules for the public comment. I checked ordinance 1623, which happens to deal with public comment and open comment. At no point does it say we have to address our concerns or questions to the President of the Board. And nowhere does it say there's only 30 minutes for public comment, so I'd like a little clarification on that. It seems that we're, I shouldn't say we're, that you guys are making up your own rules at as it goes. I mean, from, from the public comment section to disbanding the park board. And, I mean, the list goes on and on. It just seems that we're looking for ways to open the town up to potential lawsuits. And we'd just like to know why. Thank you.
Patrick Connolly?
My name is Patrick Connolly, 9354 East Oak Ridge Drive, St. John, Indiana. There's a lot of things I have to say, but the woman that came up there first, she basically put it in a nutshell. I just want to tell you, gentlemen, as I grow as a man, I have two little girls. And they're teaching me how to be a man. How to admit when I'm wrong, how to be a good father and a good person. You guys remember that. When you look in the mirror, karma's coming. If you can think that you can be a real man, and look at yourself in the mirror, then so be it. But in my opinion, neither of you three are being real men.
Kyle Stanley? Stan C., I'm sorry.
Hello, my name's Kyle Stan C., 11711 Leonardo Drive. I'm kind of changing topic a little bit here. I'm a lifelong skateboarder and resident of the town of St. John. And I've, I grew up here my whole life, never having a skate park to go to, so I just wanted to say I'm really excited to see a skate park coming to the area. I've attended all the previous meetings with the previous park board. And I think Spahn Ranch did a really great job of accommodating all ages and skill levels within that skate park. I just wanted to offer my perspective as a skateboarder towards the, the two designs, the proposed modification to the design that they made with a change in pricing. Both would be fantastic to see. Really, either way, the skateboard community would love to see either design come to fruition, so. If anything, with the new design, I do think it is a bit of improvement from the last one. It has kind of more flow. It just allows more traffic to flow throughout the park. So I just wanted to say we're really excited to see it come, and can't wait for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Terry Nellman.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Terry Nellman. My residence is 103, I'm sorry, that's my old address. My residence is 109500 West 103rd Place, St. John, Indiana. I've been here in front of this board several times already. I want to apologize to you, and especially the community, why I have not been here to maintain my position with the harboring of these dangerously built-in our homes. We've had a death in the family from COVID, very, very bad. My mother-in-law had a stroke. She's doing fine, no problem. Let's not go too far with this. And lastly, the last meeting was my, me and my wife's anniversary of 48 years. So, with that said, I'd like to get to the point. The point is, is, uh, in the car business, there is what they call a lemon law. And a lemon law is when you've got a problem with the thing, the government, the vehicle, the government, the manufacturer, used to hide the problems, okay? The federal government got involved so that the problems with these cars would be taken care of. And which it was. That's the reason why they formed the, uh, the, um, the law as far as the, um, problems with cars, all kinds of problems, not just minor stuff or major stuff. Now, the reason why I've asked in the past, a couple of times, Mr. Swet, is to get the FBI in here. One question I have for you. Did you, Mr. Swet, approach the council, the Town Council, and our legal counsel, Mr. Townsend, to contact the FBI with the problems we have? You have documentation. The whole board's got documentation. The Hammond Times has got documentation. I sure hope that I will not be, uh, I'm going to say the word, silenced, but I sure hope that I'm not going to be censored. This needs to be taken care of, Mr. Swet. You asked me, Mr. Swet, in the past, how can I help you? Mr. Swet, it's not helped me, it's helped the whole community of, of the Gates of St. John, with its law and development, and the Lawton family has got this, this situation tied up. Now, that's the question again. Have you contacted the FBI to get them in here? Or a state agency, another federal agency, to protect the homeowners in the Gates of St. John? Last question, Mr. Swet, is these people that own these homes, are you going to be expecting them to be voting for you on Election Day?
Are you, you're done?
Let me know when my three minutes are up. I'm just waiting for an answer.
Time is up.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. All right, that is the end of public comment. Some of these things I can maybe address. I guess, starting with Katie's, Katie Walsh's question, what's to be expected next? We really didn't anticipate slowing down anything. We didn't really anticipate a lot, many things changing with the parks. We had planned on keeping everything as it was. Continuing with what was there, continuing with what was approved. Not stopping anything. In fact, we've, I think our town manager has worked closely with Tyler to try to put together next steps of things so that things don't fall through the cracks and don't get delayed. So yeah, as far as the work stoppage that went on there, that will be addressed later when we get to that portion in the agenda. So I hope it's going to be parks as usual. As far as the 40 acres go, and the swap, the 40 acres was never a part of the land swap in the gates. The 40 acres- President, and I'm asking legal, if I may. Should we be commenting on this because it's in litigation?
The only thing that I would say about the 40 acres is that it was originally part of a settlement agreement that was approved by the council. And then subsequent to that, that settlement agreement was modified due to, how do I put this? The developer was supposed to provide us with other land for the swap, and he was unable to perform that. So when he came to us and said he couldn't perform that, that part of the settlement agreement, that swap, was taken out of the agreement. It wasn't a fault of the town. It was a fault, it wasn't a fault of anyone, really. It's just that the other land was not available for the developer. So that came out, and currently, Mr. Wizwati is correct, the 40 acres is still part of the litigation that was commenced in early 2020. And the developer owns it right now.
Okay.
What about the previous fire station?
All right, as far as Mr. Roberts' comments, the comments that were emailed at the last meeting were forwarded and emailed to all the Town Councilmen, and they will be as part of the record. Mr. Manassopoulos, the Slaven agreement is going to be covered tonight in the agenda. As far as ordinance 1623 addressing the President, that's just part, I'm sorry, that's just part of Roberts' Rules of Order, which is what we try to follow. As far as the time limit, time limit was set up by ordinance 1623. As far as Mr. Nellman, I don't know that I can even comment on your FBI situation. I don't know-
I wish you would.
Wish, Mr. Westland, we, does there, we have no authority over this, or can you refresh my memory?
When the issue was presented, it was reviewed, and I think, you know, some of the councils even been to the site, but-
Could you speak up a little, please?
Sure. I think some of the councils even been to the site. I, I haven't, but the analysis was that, you know, there's a private dispute between Mr. Nellman and-
It's community, mister, sir. Sorry.
It was a private dispute, and that, you know, certainly, any resident who feels that there's been a criminal wrongdoing-
Oh, he said criminal.
Well, the, the FBI investigates criminal proceedings, so that's why one would call the FBI. So, any resident in a private dispute has the right to contact any agency, federal or state. And really, that's, my recollection is that's where it was left.
Okay. Yeah, whether they vote for me or not, that's a political thing that I'm not going to get into on this, on this stage, but-
I'm sure he won't.
Okay. All right. Item number six is the presentation from the Tri-Town Safety Village. Yeah, Mr. President, I'd like to have the fire chief, the Duke, come up and basically make the introduction on this. Okay.
Morning, afternoon, guys, evening. I don't know what that time it is. So I'm just going to introduce Bill Jarvis here, but want to talk a little bit about the Tri-Town Safety Village. Give a little bit of history, and then Bill could talk a lot more about it than I can. So the Tri-Town Safety Village was incorporated in 1994. Through 1994 to 2004, they were gaining money, building the actual property. But 2004 was the first time students came through the Tri-Town Safety Village. The Tri-Town Safety Village is supported by the town of Dyer, town of St. John, and town of Sherville. We supply a firefighter, or a police officer, or some other people if we can, to help with that education for students that come through. In 2008, Mr. Jarvis, Bill, became the executive director. Bill's position helps-
Bill's position helps, and this is just a short synopsis, and Bill does a lot more than this, but he helps manage, organize, and run day-to-day operations at the Trittown Safety Village. And just a little bit prior, prior to COVID, there was about 3,900 students that did attend and will go through the Trittown Safety Village. And then we're anticipating in the fall of 2022, all second, third, and fourth graders in the Trittown area will be coming to the Trittown Safety Village. And I'll introduce Bill, and I'll be here if there's any other questions.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, board members, councilman, staff. Bill Jarvis, executive director of the Trittown Safety Village. I've been doing that proudly for 14 years now, and want to continue with your support as you've supported us in the past, to teach the children of Lake Central School System to be safe in their communities, to be safe in their homes. We teach the things like getting out of a burning home with a physical house that fills with smoke. We have policemen that come and instruct the children, answer the questions about stranger danger, crossing streets, riding their bicycles, animal interactions. The railroad portion is Operational Lifesaver, certified personnel that give those classes to the children for walking along tracks, that it's illegal, it's trespassing, wearing their earbuds when they shouldn't on the railroad tracks. There's been numerous accidents across Northwest Indiana and Chicago, and our job is to eliminate it. So when you hear nothing, we've done a great job. We would hope to have you the continued support of the council so that we could continue to teach the children of Lake Central. We have the full support of Dr. Veraco and the other staff at Lake Central, and would just hope that we can continue again with your support. If you have any questions, I'm open to answer any one of them, because I serve the community and proudly.
So how have we come out of COVID now, as far as scheduling? I know we were really limited on some of the kids that could come through. Can you give us an update on where we're at with that?
We've already done Hanover schools, we have the St. John schools coming up. I can give you exact dates if you like, I've got a ton of paperwork here. But all second grade, Lake Central started with second grade, and in the fall, they'll move into second, third, and fourth grade, because now we're playing catch-up. So it's more important than ever to have the funding to help the Safety Village. And understand, the funding does nothing more than to help us with our basic cost of having the doors open every day. There's no exorbitant money that is spent there, as you can see, what we're requesting is a minimal amount at best. No individual community could run such an organization on the amount that we're requesting, or even start by building just a police or fire instruction, because once you had that personnel, it would well overwhelm what we're requesting. But the schools will continue, and in this fall of 2022, it's going to be larger than ever. So we're going to exceed 3,900 students locally.
Okay. Anyone else?
Bill, have you, have you raised, I remember when I was there a few years back, have you raised the head count charge?
We have not, because it's hard for some families to afford the money that it costs to come to the Safety Village, which is $5 per student. I always apply for grants, we've had grants from CN Railroad, we've had grants from Ambridge Pipeline, NIPSCO, just to name a few, Mike Anderson Chevrolet. They've all been very generous in helping with the funding that we need to teach the children, because the instructors are not cheap, even though the towns do help out when they can. But to staff the Safety Village with police officers, fire people, and all that, it's very hard to let go of your staff to get that job done. So we have to pay them.
How's the split now between the three, three participants?
If you're talking about Sherrville, St. John, and Dyer, Sherrville came on board back in February with the amount that we're requesting. Dyer is contributing 15,000. They think because the lack of population that that would be the just amount, even though there's an agreement between all three communities that it'd be equal. Also, the fact that there's only 60 less students that come from the Dyer community than St. John or Sherrville.
Do you have a ballpark figure on how many students that come through from each school, or is it just the Lake Central School System?
Well, we mainly do Lake Central, they get priority to everything. But we do schools across all of Northwest Indiana. That was one of the agreements I made with the people that wanted me to come on board to begin with. This was not my job. I was retired, but I was requested to come in and run it like a business, which I do. And that's the only way to keep it viable. But we have East Chicago, Whiting, Mariville, Crown Point Schools, just to name a few. So it's a very important program, and the agreement I came up with initially was, any child that wants to attend the Safety Village, I feel is welcome, because it's life-saving. And you never know where they're going to move to in the future, anyway. Most people move within five years of living in a certain community. Any other questions I may help with?
Mr. President.
Yes.
This is on the council's agenda for the approval, for this under new business.
Under new business?
Yeah.
If you guys are okay with moving that up, to take care of this now?
You can continue it under the new business, we don't have to change the agenda. I was just advising the council that that's on there. So if they had any questions specific to the motion, they could ask it now.
So that's item number five, under new business, the financial matters, I'm sorry, item number nine, A5, which is on the second page. Motion to the Trittown Safety Village in the amount of $34,499. So that'll be coming up a little later in the meeting. Can you hang around, just in case anything else comes up then?
Not a problem.
Okay.
Is there any reason why Dyer doesn't come in with the full amount?
I'd rather not comment on that. There's a value to the children of our community. I can't put a number on it, but it's sure not this number. My home burnt to the ground in 2000. St. John helped put it out, as well as Lake Hills, Sherrville, and Dyer. I almost lost my son. That's why this is heartfelt, and I cannot tell you, you know, my fire was huge, it went to the ground. To replace it was thousands upon thousands of dollars. I won't give you the exact number, but I can tell you, this number, to save my son's life, I would pay it in a heartbeat.
Okay.
The schools coming up real quick, Jane Ball on the 15th Lincoln, already been there, Coling still is coming. So those are just a few of the schools that will be attending.
Okay.
All right. Would you like me to sit down until?
Yeah, if you would, please.
Yeah.
Is there any other questions? Okay. Let's move on to item number seven, which is approval of the minutes. We have minutes for March 23, regular meeting, special meeting April 13, special meeting April 18, park, regular meeting April 15, park board, special meeting in April 9. Questions or comments on those minutes?
I got a question, comment.
Yes.
I don't feel that we should, the park board regular meeting on March 15, and the park board special meeting on April 11. We're not park board members, we're not part of the park board. I don't see how we can say yes to that, or okay. None of us partook in, partook in the meeting, so.
I would agree with that.
Mr. Westland, how will we handle those minutes that are not approved?
They stand as unapproved minutes.
Okay.
They were typed, you have a record of the typed minutes of the meeting, and you have the video as well. So if, for instance, a request was made for the minutes, you would simply respond by giving the minutes that you have and referring to the video.
Okay. So Dave, can you turn your microphone?
So for the record, if the council does not approve the minutes, they would just stand as unapproved?
That's correct.
Okay.
All right. So Wayne has an issue with the park board minutes, Mike, you have an issue with the park board minutes. Anybody else have an issue with the park board minutes? Or better yet, is there a motion on the park board minutes to, how would we do that? We're not going to defer.
Make a motion to approve the town council minutes.
Right.
Let's do that.
Yep.
Okay. And we'll leave the park board minutes alone then, unless there's a motion? All right, so if I look for a motion on the three regular meeting minutes on March 23, the April 13, town council, and April 18, special council meeting minutes. Do I have motion?
And the 23rd, and March 23 as well.
That's where I started, yes, March 23.
So moved?
Your support for that?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. That is approved, five to zero. And is there a motion on the park board? If not, that will just not be approved. Not hearing a motion, we'll move on. Item number eight.
Mr. President, if I may.
Yes.
Items eight A and, items eight A and eight B, I would ask that those be deferred to the special meeting and study session for May 11.
Make a motion to defer item A and item B.
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, say nay. Those are both deferred, five to zero.
Thanks, Joe.
Item number nine, financial matters of corporation. I'm going to turn this over to you, Joe.
For the request for purchases, I believe Beth had those, the RTPs?
Yes, I do. There are 22 RTPs totaling $665,852.98. You should have received all 22 RTPs for review.
Are those for the town and parks, or are those?
They are combined, yes.
Combined, okay. Are we okay with combining them?
Yes.
Mr. Westland? Okay. Questions or comments?
What's the, what's the total going to be then if we're combining them? There's 1,670,772.73.
For here.
Okay, we're, all right.
No, the RTPs. Can you repeat that number again, Beth? 22,000?
22 RTPs totaling $665,852.98.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the request to purchase the 22 RTPs?
Move.
Thank you, Mike.
Second.
Thank you, Wayne. Questions or comments? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. That is approved, five to zero. Okay. Item number three is the vouchers. So we'll deal with these on two separate dates. The item number three is the motion for the vouchers in the, for the April 27 docket Do I have a motion?
It's all moved.
Thank you, Mike, support for that?
Second.
Second.
Thank you, Brian. Questions or comments? All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, say nay. That is approved, five to zero. Item number four is the dockets of accounts payable vouchers from April 19 for the Parks and Recreation Department in the amount of $35,652.62. Do I have a motion?
I'd like to defer for further clarification.
Okay, so there's a motion to defer, is there support for that?
When we voted for this, Mike, it was three to two, and now the ordinance passed, what, last Monday? But I don't, I think we have to look at this better. I think that there are certain things that the parks, where is the money going to go? Is some of that money, that if you're collected for something, it goes to the general fund now? It's, there's something that's not clear there. So I'd like, I'd like to get the, maybe the clerk's office to step in and look at that. I think that when we did that, it was done in a hurry, and I think that we need to look at that better.
So you're talking about the money coming in?
Right.
And money going out?
Some of the money's coming in. If you're raising money for one thing, it's going to the general fund, but I don't think it has to go to that what you collected for.
Okay, but this is just to pay the bills.
This is the payment of the bills, right. That's, that's, that's for that 35,000, right?
Yes.
I don't think that, well, you guys, continue on.
Well, is there a reason we shouldn't pay these bills?
Do you see anything on the list, or you object to, on the list of?
I didn't look at the list, I got everything about four o'clock in the afternoon, with all the different changes, so.
Well, if you need more time, I'll second your motion.
So there's a motion to defer, and second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay.
I just want to clarify one thing, and I guess Beth would be the one to clarify. There's, on this ledger, there's payroll.
Well, payroll technically is a can pay, they're already paid. I guess, I don't know if you guys want to talk about what Wayne's talking about now or later, but.
I just want to make sure the employees are getting paid, that was my only question.
And what's the downside to not passing this today?
So I guess the concern would be this, and I'll try to, Dave, see if you can follow me. So your ordinance 1764 repealed and replaced all except one prior park ordinances. And then in ordinance 1764, you guys reestablished certain funds, like the Park Impact Fund, the Memorial Bench and Tree Fund, Gift Fund, Family Gardening Fund. But what wasn't contemplated was Fund 204. Okay, so I feel like in order, and I kind of went through this today with State Board of Accounts, in order to pay a docket with 66 claims out of Fund 204, I would need clarification from the council as to how you plan to proceed with this fund, because ordinance 1764 claims or states now that all fees charged and collected by the town on behalf of Parks and Rec shall be deposited into the general fund. So my question is, you can't take in money into the general fund for certain services and programs and things of that nature, and then make payments for those same things out of a different fund. So clarification would need to be preferably through the form of an ordinance as to how you plan to proceed. Are you running the new Parks Department out of the general fund? Or are you looking to reestablish Fund 204?
Okay, I'll probably want to work, you can work through that with the town manager and Mr. Westland, figure that out. Make sense?
Yeah, let's see clarification on that.
Okay. All right. I have, so item number five is a motion to authorize payments to the Trittown Safety Village, and pursuant to our local, inter-local cooperation agreement in the amount of $34,499 and direct the clerk treasurer to remit the payment from the appropriate account and appropriation. Do I have a motion?
I'd like to discuss it, I'd like to.
Let's get a motion on the floor.
All right.
It's all moved.
Thank you, Mike, your support for that.
Second.
Thank you, Wayne. Okay, Wayne, now you may.
All right, I like the idea of the Safety Village, but $34,000 is high, we paid 27,000 last year. Dyer only gets in 15,000. Why we even call it a Trittown Safety Village? We send volunteers over there to set up things, and I think, I'd like to match 15,000 with Dyer and go with that. That's, I would like to make a motion to support the Safety Village for 15,000. I mean, we're getting up there in the numbers, I know the importance of it, but I think that's almost, almost $35,000.
Yeah, that is a lot of money, I agree. It's a lot of money. Anybody else have comments on that, or questions?
Oh, we've been a member of the Safety Village ever since it started. Oh, we've been a member of the Safety Village ever since it started. I don't, you know, why don't you, you need not funding it now?
I'm not saying not funding it. I'm just saying $15,000, you know.
So we have a motion and a second, and then we're, now we're in discussion. And Mr. Pandinos, I kind of heard your comments as a motion to amend down to $15,000. Is that accurate?
Right, yes.
Okay, so, so really now you have the motion, you have the second for the $34,499. Now you have Mr. Pandinos's motion to amend that down to $15,000. So it would be appropriate to see if there's a second.
Support for that?
For Mr. Pandinos's motion.
Is there support for, or is there a second for the motion to amend to $15,000 on the motion from Mr. Pandinos? Call in one more time? Okay, so that will fail for a lack of second.
Can I make a comment? Do you mind?
Yes, you may.
So just kind of doing the math, $34,000, our portion is, you know, and money needs to be watched over. We need to be wise stewards of our finances, no doubt. But it's $8.90 per student, the numbers you were telling me, you know, the per student that comes through and gets educated. So it's $8.90 that the taxpayers of St. John are going to be paying to have that education. I think that's money well spent. I just do.
Anybody else? Yeah, I would agree. I mean, we need to do our part. I would rather that Dyer paid more, rather that Dyer paid their portion. Sherrville stepped forward and paid their portion. I think we should pay ours.
And to put a record, I'm not against the Safety Village. I'm just.
I understand. Just the dollars and cents.
Right.
Right. All right. So I'm going to call for the question. So we have a motion and a second to pay the Tri-Town Safety Village in the amount of $34,499 and direct the clerk treasurer to remit payment from the appropriate account and appropriation. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Nay.
That is approved four to one. Thank you, sir. Yes.
Thank you. If I may make a quick comment, if I may. Just so everybody knows, on the council, my makeup of my board is the police chief, fire chief, town council president of each individual town. The treasurer for the Tri-Town Safety Village is the chief of police from the town of Sherrville. No funding is being wasted whatsoever. This funding is made to educate children. Short of it, Dyer's choice of doing what they did, I don't agree with it, but I thank you very much for your support. Thank you and be proud of what you did.
Thank you for your work that you do out there, Bill.
Thank you, Bill. And I'd also like to thank Chief LaDuke because he's one of the executives on the board as well. So thank you, gentlemen.
Thanks again.
Thank you.
And from there, we go to item seven?
Six.
That's correct. Now, Mr. President, you're correct that at the clerk's request, we're going to pull this off the agenda. This is a can pay item, as we discussed earlier today, so this matter can be taken care of and resolved.
Okay, so item number seven. Authorize and ratify an agreement with Cynthia Koppenhaver, event planner for the St. John Freedom Fest celebration, July 3, 2022. Just covering this one.
I can just speak on the point. The council approved the amount not to exceed $10,000 for this. The agreement outlines the terms and conditions of that. This was reviewed by legal and it's the...
So we're not doing a dollar amount? We're just ratifying the agreement with her?
Right, the dollar amount specified in the agreement, hourly rate, everything's all specified in there.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
It's all moved.
Is there support for that? Thank you. Thank you, Mike. Thank you, Mike. All in favor, I'm sorry, comments or questions?
I thought we had this all done already. That's why I got in my notes, why are we doing it again?
Because this is approval of the contract.
Right. They did a motion, but there was no written agreement with the contractor on that when that was done.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
That is approved four to one. Item number eight is a motion to authorize facility needs assessment in the amount not to exceed $20,000 for the St. John Parks and Recreation Department and to direct the clerk treasurer to remit payment from appropriate appropriations from Park Impact Fees to American Structure Point, Inc.
Mr. President, before you call for the question and before you call for the motion, if we could, I'm going to ask that John Kennedy from Structure Point come up and give us some background on this. Basically, this is step one in the process to determine the actual needs for the community, Parks and Recs. We worked with Tyler to set up this whole thing, so I'll let John go into more detail on that.
Okay.
Good evening, board members. My name is John Kennedy. I'm with American Structure Point. With me is Alex Koutenowski and then Greg Felkowski with Legacy Development Group. What we've been tasked, or what Tyler and I have been discussing, is the future needs for the town of St. John for a community center type of facility potentially in the future. And what our goal here today, this first step, is what we call programming. What are the needs of the town? What type of facility would be, you know, a good fit for the town? Whether it's courts, senior citizen facilities, like a community room, a place, a community place in the town. So we got to do a programming. It's like building on a house, but not knowing how many kids you need, you know, to make sure you got the right sized facility. So in teaming with Legacy Development Group, we've done the Hammond Sportsplex, we've done the Dean and Barbara White Community Center. Those organizations had programming, what size of the building to determine next steps. So I'm going to turn it over to Alex because his team will be doing most of the research and giving you guys a report on what, based on meetings with the council, stakeholders, what would be a good fit for the town.
Thank you, John. Again, Alex Koutenowski with Legacy Development Advisors. And it's basically what John said. I mean, you're almost shooting in the dark without having this assessment, trying to figure out what the needs of the town are. Obviously, St. John is growing, has been growing. We want to take a step into figuring out exactly what the, not only the needs of the community are, but, or the citizens are, but what the council may have in mind, what some of the stakeholders in the community have in mind with regard to how the town grows as far as their facilities with regard to youth sports, community centers, senior citizens, right? That's kind of what the focus is going to be. And without reaching out to those stakeholders, the youth sports organizations, the seniors of the, of the community, the town council members, difficult to figure out whether an existing facility is compatible or whether a new facility needs to be looked at. And that would be the scope of this, of this project here, this first step in the project would be to meet with those stakeholders, gather the information from, I know Tyler's leaving, but him, his successor, the town manager, the council members, just the stakeholders in the community, trying to figure out what the town has, what it needs, what direction does it need to go? And then we can, we can come back with American Structure Point and figure out what that report would yield for the town so you can make a knowledgeable decision on which direction to go. And so that's what this first step of this report would do. So I can field any specific questions you guys may have with regard to our proposal here tonight.
How many other municipalities have you, your company and/or your group, either you or John or both handled previously, say the last five years?
So locally, again, the Hammond Sportsplex, the Dean and Barbara White Community Center, Whiting Baseball Oil and Facility, we've done work in West Lafayette, Kokomo, their facilities. And if anyone has a kid that plays soccer, softball, or baseball, Westfield, we did the site civil work on that and the sports facility there as well, Structure Point. So we have a specific sports development department and so we're known for these type of facilities.
Quick question. So this, the report you would produce, it would cover programming, it would cover, you would analyze different locations that would include an existing building, maybe building a new one, also would take into account maybe traffic, everything, lot size?
Correct, correct. So we need to, I guess the first step is analyze what the town has already in its inventory. And so once we find out what it has in the inventory, the next step is looking at what are possible sites to use, whether remodeled sites or reprogrammed sites or brand new sites. And so we're looking at that from a, basically, you know, we start way up here and we bring it back down to, to ground level, so.
A comprehensive study.
Correct. Without, without talking to those stakeholders, like we classify them as, we don't know. We don't know what, what youth sports are using, maybe the schools' facilities, and how, how long can they, you know, or do they have access to that? How long can they use it? What town facilities are certain sports using, right? Where are our seniors going? If it's not a town-owned property or a town facility, where are they going, right? And how can we accommodate them? Are those facilities sufficient enough or do we need to build something more specific that, that can encompass that? And we look at it from a multi-use purpose as well, right? So who's using this Monday through Thursday, right? 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM? Who's using it in the evenings? Is that same facility compatible for some use during the weekends as well, which may be a more fee-generated type of use? And so we're looking at it from a, from an expansive view across the board on what do we have? What are we lacking? What do we need? And all this will flow into your Park Impact study that's going to be due up here shortly, I think, in the next year or two as well.
So just be, I mean, this will get you, you know, how many courts stakeholders and the council thinks you need. So this will create some sort of massing, size and scale of a facility. And then from this, you could sort of make a determination if you want us to take it to the next step, to say, okay, here's the building size we would require if you need two courts. Maryville has three courts. Do you need an outdoor field? Is, you know, flag footballs?
If it's a gold standard, a silver standard.
Right. And then, you know, depending on, and then you're either eliminating, potentially using an existing facility, so you're not taking the time to try to retrofit something because you know the stakeholders and the vision of the town is to have something a little bit more hardy, substantial.
Right.
And sense of place where you could do almost, you know, community events at the same facility while you're doing sports and senior, senior events. So this will sort of get you to that step to say, here's the size, the scale, and then if you, you know, the next step would be, all right, what, what kind of pricing are we looking at for this type of facility?
It'll basically prioritize your needs and give you a roadmap and then, and then you can figure out how to navigate that roadmap from there.
Thanks, guys. I appreciate it.
So where did the $20,000, not to exceed $20,000 number come from? And is that something that was dreamed up here or something that you guys recommended?
It's our time and effort. Legacy Development Group is going to be doing most of the research and report. We'll be just doing some scaling, modeling, architectural-wise.
Right.
Determining if, you know, if you need so many courts, so many fields, you know, acreage, how it would look, layout and stuff like that.
I just don't want to get into $20,000 and you get halfway done and say, okay, well, we're only halfway, we need another 20. I mean, this is your number that should take care of us.
It's our number to generate and provide you with that report.
Okay.
Wasn't some of this stuff already done in our five-year plan for the Parks Department? And we already looked at Suncrest Church, we took a tour of it, and I looked in your stuff rather quickly. And John, I respect you and your company, so I'm not in favor of $20,000 to spend for you to tell us that we need a community center. We already know that. And the whole thing is, do we want Suncrest? Can we get Suncrest? Or do we wait and try and get the 40 acres if we get that and put a new building there? So it's new versus old. What's the, what's the cost? But we know we want pickleball courts. The residents want, you know, us to act on it. But right now, what, what happened with the park board, we're kind of at a standstill. But $20,000 to, to tell us that what we need is, seems like a lot of money.
And Councilman, what I would say is, you know you want pickleball courts, but how many pickleball courts do you need? You know you want senior citizen facilities, you might want basketball courts. This will just sort of give you a gauge on how many the requirement sizes and things like that.
And we had, we had a company with, with Suncrest that came out and they were going to give us a synopsis of what to do. And when they found out that the park board got disbanded, they said they've had trouble with town councils, so they backed out of that. They were going to come and read, you know, tell us what we had to do with that. And, and for the reason what happened, they just said, no, we're not going to do it. We don't want to be a part of it.
Who was that Wayne who dropped out?
It was a company that had to come in, that they were going to, we had, we took a tour of the facility. And then there was another company, I don't know the name, they were, they were going to come in and, and give us, okay, this, you're going to take this out, take that out, and how to renovate the inside. And they dropped out. But I, I know, $20,000 seems like a lot. We already know kind of what we need. We just don't know where to put it and how to put it. There's an estimate, I think, on pickleball courts and a tennis court out in the Gates East. And I don't know if that came in for Tyler yet or not, so.
And I'll just ask, I mean, because I haven't done the research, how many pickleball courts are in St. John?
There's none. And there's, there's a need for it.
How many tennis courts are in St. John?
One.
Right? And so how many tennis players are there? How many pickleball players are there? That's our job to figure out.
Well, yeah.
Who are out there, what you need. And I, I don't know that the town has that right now.
Well, that gentleman there, I, I won't pronounce his last name, it's, but he's an avid pickleball player. And he says there's a, there's a need. He's been to some of our meetings, to the park board, and people, it's a, it's a growing thing right now.
And this is one of the guys that we would love to talk to, to figure out how many players are out there, how many people are playing every week.
He's got an app on his phone that says, you know, where everybody's playing. And it's just like the skateboarders. The skateboarders know where the parks are. Oh, did you go to this one? Did you try this one? They know about Hammond, they know about what's coming to our town. It's like a camaraderie.
And what you don't have right now is one single report that tells you all that information. And that's what we'll do here today.
Well.
I think we need to wait till we get a parks superintendent.
To start, study?
Start the study, someone that you can work with.
How long would it take you to do the study?
I believe we have a, was it?
Nine weeks, a little bit over two months.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's a long estimate. I think we can get it done quicker than that.
So I think we'll have a parks superintendent in place by the time you have this, this ready for us. If it could approve.
So I guess my question would be then to find out what facilities we need, do we need to have? So my, my idea was to try to come in with, you know, an idea of, you know, what it's going to cost and then have a public forum where people can come in and give their input as far as what they would like to see, what do they think they need? You think we need to do something like that first?
We got to get this programming just so we could figure out what size of building to cost out. We don't know how many pickleball courts, we don't know how many basketball courts, how big of a community center, how many rooms you might require for different activities. Is it the desire of the town to do some outdoor type of venue where it's a multi-use, farmer's market, things like that? I don't know if that's been developed or known. And until we know those, that information, we would be, you know, we couldn't be giving you an accurate price or a cost estimate, which is, it wouldn't be valuable to you.
So, you know, the community center is going to be millions and millions, $10 million. It's going to be extremely expensive. So $20,000, which is 0.2% of a cost, anytime you do a development project, having a clear plan and clear plan of action in building to suit for the needs of our town is important. None of us up here know this business. None of us are Parks and Recs experts.
Yeah, but there's, I like, I really hate to see this thing slowed down, but I really like Mike's idea of having a park director in place because it's his programs that are that are going to fill this facility. Tyler, I'm gonna kind of put you on the spot. If you, if you were going to continue to be here, would you like to have some input in this? Or do you think, as a new park director just coming in, you'd be happy with a report that was completed?
Well, first, I mean, I'm happy to help in any way I can going forward. I know this project's been discussed a few times in this room, and, you know, it's been in this holding pattern for quite some time now. Mr. Pondinos is right, we had engaged another firm that had, was no longer interested in offering their services to the town. And so, we started the conversation with American Structure Point recently. Just to try to push this forward, to gather any sort of data that would be helpful in helping the council make a, you know, responsible decision here. Because it is a multimillion-dollar project that, you know, is gonna be considered. So, I mean, I mean, yeah, my name's on the proposal. You can see I engaged these gentlemen to start this conversation. And I think some of the, I guess, questions that the park board had was, what was the appetite the council had for this project? And what type of data do they need to make a decision? That was, those were the two questions that were kind of lingering out there for quite some time now.
Right. So, in your opinion, are we wise to get started on this thing? Or are we wise to wait till we have a park director in place?
I, no, okay. Well, I mean, I don't, you know, the park director is gonna have a lot on his plate. I mean, I don't know what the park director's involvement in this is going to be, or how connected to the community they will be to be helpful in this process.
Don't you believe it's gonna all be a learning process combined with the new park director and American Structure Point?
Yeah, it will.
Why not have a, why not defer this and have a meeting with the public? What do you want? We, I think at one time, the town did a survey. What do you want? You want pickleball courts? You want tennis courts? You want more basketball courts? Do you want a community center? Maybe that would be a way to go. And then, that would give these guys, okay, these guys, this is what they're looking for. We're not gonna look at this and that. I know Suncrest, we thought about having the farmer's market there, if that was ever to take place. They got a lot of green space. So, maybe we need to deal with the public first and say, hey, what do you guys want?
I'd like to get a Parks Superintendent in place.
Yeah, I think that's sensible, and also, yeah.
I have no problem working with your group, but I think, you know, and if Tyler was staying on, and I'd go for it tonight, but he's departing, and it's not fair to a new park superintendent coming in.
Plus, he'll get a feel for what the town is interested in as well. Programs and a facility.
That's my feeling.
So, Mike, and you wanna hold off on any public meeting until we actually get a park director in place as well? Or just this agreement?
Just this agreement. You know, I don't see no sense in going with it, you know. He's, our park superintendent now is departing, leaving, you know, we're gonna get another one here.
I think we should just stop the whole thing, because you're spending $20,000 to tell somebody this is what you need. I mean, that's just not frugal spend, that's frugal, it's not frugal spending. Things were on a roll with the Parks Department, and that got disbanded, so $20,000 is a lot to spend.
It's not the money part of it that I'm worried about. I'm worried about doing a study and a whole new operation coming in.
Yeah, I think that's sensible. I think, yeah, we defer this until we get a parks.
I think it needs to be done, but.
That's sensible.
Not until we get someone in the office.
Okay.
Great.
So, then, going back to your question, Wayne, would you suggest a public meeting? Or would you suggest a questionnaire that gets sent out? Because I think that's gonna give us probably more.
I would like to just scrap the whole thing for right now.
Here's a quick question for you, gentlemen. Is involved in this a survey of the community? This is what we're paying you guys to do during this process, if we do that?
Well, we, for this report, it was a $10,000 view. Executives, stakeholders, not individual doing a survey. I mean, that was not included in this proposal.
Okay.
So, I mean, from my standpoint, it's, we wanna see what the members of the administration of the town have in mind first.
You're not asking the community?
And so, once we find out kind of where the appetite is for the administration, where the funding may be for the administration, the next step would be getting those stakeholders involved from a standpoint of the youth sports directors, the seniors of the community, the public of the community. I think that all that input needs to be put in place with the appropriate questions. I mean, we have specific questions and questionnaires that are provided, those individuals are provided to the community in general. But as far as a questionnaire that would go out to every single person in the community, that's maybe not intended here in this report. But there'd definitely be opportunity for that, for the community to have their input into, whether it's a public meeting or several.
I think one of the big stakeholders would be the Parks Superintendent.
Agreed.
Agreed.
So, do you wanna make a motion to defer?
So moved.
Thank you, Mike, there's support for that.
Second.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, gentlemen.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. That is approved 5 to 0. Thank you, gentlemen. All right. New business item B, ordinances and resolutions, ordinance 1766. Joe?
So, this is making an amendment to the building and planning director's salary. With the competitive job market that we have right now, we do need to be a little bit more flexible and diligent to retain highly qualified and capable department heads. The ordinance increase for the salary for the director is $316 by weekly. This brings the position into a competitive range, as I illustrated to the council. The current director has over 20 years of experience in his profession and role. He's managed the department and development of the town in a professional manner, and frankly, we can't afford to lose him. So, I would recommend that the council approve the ordinance.
Okay, do you have a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept ordinance number 1766.
You gotta consider it. You gotta make that motion first, and then adopt it on first reading, if your intent is to do it tonight.
Okay, we gotta do it in two. So, I'll make a motion to consider ordinance number 1766, on first reading.
Second.
Okay, questions or comments? All in favor, signify. I'm sorry, go ahead.
So, we're gonna, we already gave them a 3% increase at the beginning of the year. Now, we're gonna give them, according to Joe's email that he sent out, approximately $8,223. So, that's about $685 a month. Why not just hire somebody part-time? Because if they're swamped over there already, and I think in the email, Joe, you said that you were gonna have them do something with the EDC?
That's correct, so.
So, if you're swamped there, why would you give a guy, tell him, you're swamped here, but yet, we're gonna have you work somewhere else? That doesn't make sense, and help out. When the EDC is doing the Freedom Fest, so why aren't they doing their job? And why did the Parks Department get stuck with, or have the fest going on? They would've done a good job. So, then, we're gonna pay a lady $10,000 to put the fest together? That doesn't make sense. But that's just my opinion. I, I think that this should be tabled and discussed a little bit further. Rather than just have an email come out, and if everybody wants to agree to it, or most people want to agree to it, fine, and vote on it.
So, you don't care if we lose our building and planning director?
Yeah, we're simply matching an offer. Is that, that's what's going on here?
What's the offer?
I'm sorry, I don't want to discuss personnel matters.
And I don't want to do that either. I'd rather do it behind closed doors.
Okay.
So, I've got a motion, a second. Any other comments? All in favor of, I'm sorry. Considering ordinance 1766 on first reading, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay.
Nay.
That is approved 4 to 1.
One more thing while we're on the topic of saving employees. I've been in talks a couple of times about revamping the way the pay structure is in the Public Works Department. Can we at least get some kind of direction with the Public Works Director in retaining some of those guys as well?
I'm already on that, Councilman. I've had discussions preliminarily with Bobby, and I've also had conversations with Tammy.
Two town managers, and they've left before we've gotten anything done, so I'd like to.
I've got some ideas, and I'd like to share those with you if you want.
Not a problem.
And it kind of mirrors a little bit what you were looking at, but in a different way.
Aye.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, item number two is ordinance 1767. Joe?
Oh, I'm sorry. So, this ordinance that's presented here will allow for some greater flexibility for the town staff. As with many other businesses in town, St. John has to be flexible with the way that we're doing and engaging contractors to perform these inspections. The changes allow that to happen, and the staff recommends the approval of that.
Okay. Do you have a motion to?
I'll make a motion to consider ordinance number 1767 on first reading.
Is there support for that?
Second.
Thank you, Mike. Question, comments?
Yeah, I got a question. Is it in the budget? Or are we gonna do another appropriation for, at the end of the year, and find out we don't have enough money? Last year, I think we appropriated $1.2 million, because we weren't watching our money.
In terms of, is this in the budget? The way it's structured is, yes.
What kind of guarantee do we have of that? Or are we gonna find out? We pass it, and, oh, we made a mistake.
Well, unless the electrical rates go, you know, crazy. But the way it's structured in the salary ordinance, it is at the market rate for electrical inspectors.
Okay. Then I'll call for the question. All in favor of considering ordinance 1767 on first reading, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay.
Nay.
That is approved 4 to 1. Ordinance 1768.
Wrong page, okay. So, this action that we're requesting, we're actually repealing the previous salary amendment that we did for the town events. After discussion with department heads and with the Clerk Treasurers' Office, the recommendations were to essentially stick to the same process that we had the previous year. So, that's what we're doing on this.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to consider ordinance number 1768 on first reading.
Is there support for that? Thank you, Mike. Questions or comments?
Yeah, how come this is the third time that we're doing this? At the last meeting, we just did it. And then, now, we're gonna do it again? Why are we, this is the third time, I think, that we're doing this.
Actually, this is the second. This repeals that action.
Because I know that, well, and one time, the money was gonna come out this way. The money's coming entirely out of the general fund. But before, some of it was coming out of the park, and some of it was coming out, and then they changed it. But that's the thing.
So, the changes that you're referring to were recommended by the Clerk Treasurers' Office, and we agreed on that, that it should come out of the town general fund.
It should come out of the general fund.
But we did, we did make those changes. Those changes are still intact on this ordinance as well.
But it's, you know, and why have a stipend? Why don't you just pay them the hourly rate?
They are, they will be getting their hourly rate, just like they did last year.
But then, why do you call it stipend?
But the stipend was reduced, because it matches what we were doing last year.
Okay, so, we've got a motion, we've got a second, to consider ordinance 1768 on first reading. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved 4 to 1. Item number four, resolution 2022-04-27C.
So, this agreement provides for reimbursement to the town for the road improvement project that will be coming up. The inter-local government cooperation agreement with the town of Sherrville and Lake County. Sherrville will be picking up $186,000 of this expense, and Lake County will be paying $127,000 for this.
How much is our expense?
It'll be like $354, would be the net amount, and I think it's like $350 something.
So, I thought, I thought.
Might've been $347, so.
I thought it was like $600,000.
The total project cost, I believe, was estimated at $600.
$600, okay. And how come that ain't on here, on what we're gonna pay, $300 and whatever? Yeah, we got Sherrville, and we got County, which is fine, I'm not against this project. But our costs should be on there.
I believe the total cost was on the, on the resolution.
So, the total cost is, what, $603, do the math?
All right.
It's on the fourth whereas.
Yeah, I see it there, but again, we should not get these agendas, you know, willy-nilly, at like 4:00 in the afternoon, you should have them, not at 20 to 4, 10 to 4. It's just not right. And then, you'd have to come in here on such a long agenda, and have to go through all this, and try and put it together and make some sense of it, because we're making a vote on something that's gonna affect the town. What happens on this day, that's either affects this town positively or negatively. So, this, maybe we need to get on the people in the office, you know, maybe the councilmen too, because we keep changing things. But we shouldn't change so much, it's like.
So, Wayne, if my math is right, it's 290. 290, 56630, if my math is.
Yeah, I seen that now. But I didn't, I mean, you don't have time to go through all of these papers, and you've got three hours before a meeting. And if you want to eat dinner, well, you know.
This information came out last week, at the end of the week. And I think there was a notation saying that, you know, we've been working on this for months.
Well, we've been, you've been working on it for about a year and a half.
Okay.
And then, the previous town manager should've had up that interlocal agreement.
I think we got this Friday. This came out Friday. It didn't come out at 4:30 today.
No, no. Mike, you need to come here in the afternoon and find out what goes on in the office. Because some of this stuff is still being done, and rattled around, and, no, this has changed, oh, that's changed, oh, we added this. We had another ordinance that was gonna come up, I think, 68, 1768. And that's, you know, that was something else. Well, that got thrown off on the side. And I'm just asking for our, why our figure wasn't on there, but I see it in here. But it's hard to go back and forth and check everything.
Well, I would think, Wayne, that the.
If I overlook something, then I apologize.
Well, I would think that the estimate to do this repair is gonna be $603,566.20.
Right.
Of that, Sherrville is contributing X number of dollars.
186, 127, and County is putting in 186.
County's doing 127. So, if it comes up, goes up.
Oh, okay.
Or if it comes down, that's on us.
Right.
This is just, this is just.
I'm not criticizing the project, I just, you know, I know it's important to do. And anytime you get somebody else to help you pay for a project, that's great.
Okay.
For sure.
So, let's call for the question on resolution 2022-04-27C. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
I didn't say aye, I was gonna ask you a question.
I'm sorry.
Where's the money coming from? I apologize, so. Last time I heard, it was coming from ARPA.
I don't think so. I don't know, Wayne, I don't have that answer.
That's what I heard, so.
Okay. Nothing has been, nothing has been determined with ARPA money, so.
Okay.
So, did you want a yea, a yes on this, or a nay?
I'll vote yes, yeah, I'm for the project.
Okay.
And I apologize that my mind wasn't going as fast as it should.
I understand, I have that problem once in a while, too. Item five, resolution 2022-04-27D. Joe?
Okay, so, this is for the sale of surplus equipment. This was for the paver that the Public Works has not utilized. The recommendation from the Public Works Department is to sell this. This was actually teed up, I think, in January of this year. Don't quote me on that, but I do believe I put that in your paperwork for that meeting. So, the town of Cedar Lake will be taking action on this at their May 17 meeting.
Okay. So, we're gonna sell this for $18,000. So, do I have a motion to approve resolution 2022-04-27D?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Mike, thank you, Brian. All, questions or comments? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. That is approved 5 to 0. Item number six, resolution 2022-04-27E. Joe?
So, the resolution is adopting the changes to the general order. The specific changes that are being made in the general order are defining what an emergency hire is. And the chief of police and staff recommend approval of this.
Okay. Did this go through the safety board, or didn't?
No, this has to be approved by the town council.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, sorry, can I get a motion on 2022-04-27E?
So moved.
Thank you, Mike.
Second.
Thank you, Mike. Questions or comments?
I think this should go back to the safety board. I don't know if we're gonna overrule them, but I know there was some, there were some problems about hiring people on an emergency basis. Seems like that's all that we're doing. So I would maybe wanna defer this and let, let the safety board look at it, and see if what we're trying to decide is right for them.
This was being discussed at the safety board.
Because I think, I think, I watched one of the, a couple of the safety board meetings, and they don't particularly like emergency hires all the time.
Right.
So if you had a son or a daughter that wanted to be on the, on the department, it's a common thing out there that, hey, in order to be on St. John's Fire Department, Police Department, you gotta be an emergency hire.
Yeah, I have no problem if it, if the, the safety board wants purview and take a look at this, I, I'm not staying in the way of that.
We should refer back to them, and, and give them at least the consideration of, yes, this is good, and we agree with it, before we say yes, and maybe throw them under the bus.
If, if I could ask council for guidance on this, in terms of the statutory responsibility for approving SOGs, and whether that falls under the purview of the town council, or the safety board?
I think the safety board's done it in the past, right?
Yeah, I think technically, it's, it's under the purview of the council, but I don't, from a procedural standpoint, what's the policy gonna be? Is it gonna... You know, the, the safety board is a fairly new phenomenon, in terms of its creation in twenty twenty, before we had the Board of Metropolitan Police Commissioners. In other communities, you know, some, the council just decides, and in, in other communities, they have a recommendation come from the safety board first. I think you're well within your rights to do either one, and, and I know, kind of what I've heard is that Mr. Aurelio, Mr. Pondinos indicated, you know, the preference would be, let's get their input.
I agree.
That's not to say in, that this board is necessarily legally bound, right, by that, but they could, you know, the, the chief of police reports to the safety board. The safety board, you know, you could take the position that the safety board should then make that recommendation to the council. And then, at that point, it's within the council's discretion. And, you know, I don't know the arguments one way or the other, I just, you know, procedurally, it's, it's kind of a policy question.
So then the appropriate course of action would be a motion to refer to the safety board for their recommendation?
So, I'm gonna withdraw my second, then. That would be the appropriate way to do that?
Yes.
Because we got a motion on the floor here, so... I would draw my second.
And you withdraw the motion?
All withdraw the motion.
Okay. Yeah, I'm, I, I agree, I'm totally in favor of getting as much direction from the safety board, and driving most of this stuff through them. They're in a better position to make recommendations than I am to figure this out, so I would defer to them as well, so. So, that, with that being said, do I have a motion to recommend this back to the, I'm sorry, over to the Board of Safety?
I'll move that. Second?
All, any other questions or comments? All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, say nay. That is five to zero. Refer this to the Board of Safety. Okay. Item number seven, resolution twenty twenty-two dash oh-four dash twenty-seven F. Joe?
Yeah, I would, I would actually just defer to the clerk treasurer on this, if she wants to just give the council a quick update.
Sure, this is the same resolution that was passed one year ago, almost today. Essentially, the resolution allows for the town to invest in depositories designated by the State Board of Finance, which basically means that St. John can consider bids both local and not local, allowing the town to choose the depository offering the best rate of return on our investment. It's verbatim from last year's resolution.
Mm-hmm. Okay, thank you. I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to consider resolution twenty twenty-two dash oh-four dash twenty-seven F.
Thank you, Mike.
I'll second.
Thank you, Wayne. Questions or comments?
Only one question. What's the current rate, Beth?
Our second...
It's moving, I'm sure.
It's moving.
Yes.
It's moving slowly, so we just, a, our second bond, we had a series of CDs, not bond, our second CD of, or series of six, matured, and so we just, I think it was one point one percent. But...
It should be a little bit higher.
It should be, it should, one point one eight percent. And that was actually through the, it was actually a US Treasury rate that beat out the, the CD rate, so...
That's the current rate hanging out there?
Yeah, for a six month. We didn't go any longer than a six month, because we're obviously expecting rates to continue to...
They should climb, hopefully.
Correct, to climb, so we didn't want to lock into anything too long-term.
What did we get last year?
We were at like point three-four.
I knew it was below one.
It was below one.
Beth, is this a yearly resolution we have passed over here?
Correct, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, if there's no other questions or comments, I will call for the question. All in favor, consider resolution twenty twenty-two dash oh-four dash twenty-seven F, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, say nay. Is approved five to zero. Item number C, I'm gonna turn this one over to Mr. Westlin.
So you have an agreed judgment involving the case filed by Mr. Slavin. It provides generally that minutes from January sixth, for the Plan Commission and BZI, be provided to Mr. Slavin. I understand that, that the Plan Commission and BZI have approved their minutes up to their last meeting. Further provides that, you know, from going forward, those will be provided to Mr. Slavin. The ones up until the time of signing the agreement would be provided within a hundred and twenty days, which we should have no problem meeting, because there's really only one, one meeting that hasn't been formally approved yet. In terms of the monetary amount, it's there in section ten of the agreed order. Mr. Slavin's entitled to his attorney's fees for filing the action, and his attorney has agreed, and actually has part of, attached his time involved in the case to forty-four hundred dollars.
Okay. So our motion is to approve the settlement amount?
Settlement agreement and authorize the payment of the attorney's fees.
Okay. So do I have a motion to approve the settlement agreement? Do I have to give the case number?
No.
No? No, I mean authorize the clerk treasurer to remit the payment according to the settlement agreement. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Brian. Do I have support for that?
Do we have any comment on it?
After it's on the floor.
Okay.
I need a second to get it on the floor.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Mike. Questions or comments?
We have all, all the minutes here that are listed, oh, it looks like there's, it goes all the way up to T, so it's probably twenty-some meeting minutes. Do we have possession of that, or did, did Mr. Slavin have that, but does the town have possession of those now?
I think, I don't have possession of them yet. They were, my understanding, Wayne, is that they were just approved at the last meeting, and what I talked to the town manager about was, in the event that this agreed judgment was approved, then I would get all those documents, I would compile them, send them to Mr. Slavin's attorney, you know, in the next two days, along with the payment that's required, so, and we just put it to bed that way. But, you know, in answer to your question, I, I think they're all done and approved, I just, I don't have them yet.
It's just kind of a shame that we had to pay that kind of money to have minutes, and that went on for quite some time, over a year, I think. And then, we hired a lady to do that, and then we fired her, and we hired somebody for full-time. It don't make no sense. I mean, the whole thing, just, you know, forty-four hundred dollars plus what your charges, Dave, that's for not having minutes? I mean, it, it seems ridiculous that, that happened, it should never happen again, and hopefully, we stay on top of it.
I'm in complete agreement with you, Wayne.
I mean...
This is absolutely ridiculous. Should have never happened, and I hope it never, ever happens again. That I completely, one hundred percent agree.
I think that, you know, the public has a right to ask the questions for the minutes, and a two-week time is probably, you know, good enough to have the minutes made up by somebody, but we've, we failed as a town, and we failed our residents in that way, so that's all I got to say.
Yeah, I agree. It should have been taken care of. It would have been nice to have a full-time person in that position, but we didn't have that, so I think we've remedied it to make, remedied that situation, to make sure it doesn't happen again. So with that, I will call for the question. All in favor of approving the settlement agreement and authorizing the clerk treasurer to pay, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, say nay. That is approved five to zero.
And I would just ask, Beth, if you could, just so that I can send it all at one, so I know it's done, done, and over with.
Long as she, as long as she gets the minutes, or whatever, that's, as part of the records, that's great, you know?
Are you, are you asking for the check to come directly to you? Is that what you're asking?
That's what I'm asking.
Okay.
Yeah. I know you don't have the minutes, I, so...
Okay, item number D, motion to approve the license and agreement with LBL Development, LLC, for the use of the land for the St. John Freedom Fest celebration for July three. I believe this is the same that we did last year, for last year's fireworks? Correct?
That's correct, sorry. This is the, the same agreement, the only thing that's changed on it is the date and the times.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
And support?
Second.
Okay, thank you, Mike, thank you, Mike. Questions or comments? All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, say nay. That is approved five to zero. Item number E, consider appointment to specific individual to the Stormwater Management Board for a four-year term, expiring on December thirty-one, twenty twenty-five.
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Robert Zany to the Stormwater Management Board for a four-year term set to expire December thirty-first of two thousand twenty-five. Mr. Zany comes recommended by Joe Moore, who unfortunately had to move out of town, and therefore wasn't eligible to be on the board any longer. Mr. Zany comes highly recommended, not only by Joe Moore, who told me on the phone personally that he has more knowledge than Joe does, and he said it's a step up from me, who is also knowledgeable, followed by Mr. Zany, has been with Robinson Engineering for thirty-one years, and worked for the last seven years with the town of Mariville, establishing RMS for Stormwater Management Board. So he comes highly recommended.
Okay, so we have a motion, is there support for that?
Second that.
Thank you, Mr. Aurelio. Comments or questions?
Yeah, I got one question, we didn't, you know, I didn't have the application, I, no one, who interviewed him? I have no problems with hiring him, or having, appointing him to the board, but did we do another one of these, where we just do what we want to do, and we don't ask anybody else for information or input?
It's a board appointment, it's not a position to be paid by the town.
We're not saying he's getting paid.
Well...
But, and anything else, our fire board, our police and fire safety, we, we had applications, and I'm just asking, why wasn't there an application put out there, or why wasn't I part of the question, or had any knowledge of it? I'm not questioning his authority, his ability, I think it comes from Joe Moore. Joe Moore, I got a lot of respect for him, I think he's a great guy, and he's, he's knowledgeable on MS four. But that's, you know, my comment, my opinion.
Okay. All right. Any other comments or questions? And all in favor of considering the appointment to Robert Zany to the Stormwater Management Board, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, say nay. That is approved five to zero. Item number F, motion to approve independent contract agreements with Beth Foster, Sarah Johnson, Erin Harris, Erin Harris, for the Parks and Recreation activities. Comments from, you want to take this, Joe, or you want to refer to Tyler on this one?
I'm gonna punt this one over to Tyler, because these were brought up during our discussion.
Sure, these are for a few new bachelor programs that we're gonna offer this summer, Pilates in the Park, Chair Yoga, Guitar Camp, and Ukulele Camp, and we're partnering with Now Yoga and Revolution Music to, to offer them.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the independent contracts with those letter listed?
So moved.
Thank you, Mike, support for that.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Mike. Questions or comments?
Yeah, I'd like to ask Tyler, wasn't this already approved, Tyler, by the park board?
It was on the agenda for Tuesday, April eighteenth.
So that was after things went awry?
That's correct.
Okay. Because I, that was my question, why isn't it back on here when it's already approved? But if it wasn't there for the meeting, then I understand.
Okay. Then I'll call for the question. All in favor of approving these contract agreements, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, say nay. That is approved five to zero. Item number G. Joe?
Okay, and I'm gonna ask Tyler to get involved with this question too here, so we could have a discussion on this. I'd like to just kind of get some facts out with respect to this, because it seems like there's a lot of misinformation, misunderstanding, and just confusion on this. And honestly, this is why things need to be done in an open, honest, and transparent way, so people know what's going on. The fact is, is that there was a contract approved with the original design, under the terms and conditions, and the agreement dated April twentieth of two thousand twenty-one. The project was scheduled to begin in July of two thousand twenty-one, however, we know that didn't happen. The Parks Board met on April eleventh. The former Parks Board President, Mike Bovat, and former member Johnny Boersma, both of whom I respect, requested that Adam Icorn, who I believe is here online with us now, is he? Okay. So, he, they had specific questions about this, which I'm gonna have them, you know, address here momentarily. I just got this information during the response from Tyler this afternoon, about five-thirty, so, you know, I got the answers, but I'll, I'll let him address that. The Parks Board issued a notice to proceed on Good Friday, April fifteenth, which specified all work is to be done in accordance with the specifications and conditions provided in the contract, and the plans dated April eighth, two thousand twenty-two. The legal issue, which I'm gonna ask council to explain, following my, this report to you guys, the Parks Board did not approve any modified plan at their meeting on April eleventh. In fact, I, I don't even know if it was set to be discussed on the nineteenth, but I believe it was. On April eighteenth, the town council took legislative actions to consolidate the Parks and Recreation Department under the town of St. John. They didn't abolish the parks programs, or contracts, or do away with any of that, so all of that, that work is still intact. The fact is, we issued a stop work order on this, because Building and Planning Department on Tuesday, April twenty-second, discovered that the project was under construction. The reason that this was done was because there was no building permit issued. Another fact is that there have been many projects in the town of St. John that have been done, where building permits were issued, and I do have copies of those here with me today for the council to look at.
For town projects, Joe?
Yes. Another fact is that many of these projects were done with building permits, okay? So the town did issue building permits. Legal counsel can advise as to why this is necessary. The contract should be pulled, or at least at a minimum, the town engineer should be looking at these projects. This brings us to today's action. The council has the responsibility now to either move forward under their terms of the original design, and pay for the seventy-nine thousand dollar change order, or move forward with the modified plan under the original contract price. The Parks Board did not approve the original plan last year, or did approve, I'm sorry, bite my tongue, did approve the original plan last year. However, they did not approve the modified plan, which is what we're trying to take care of today. I have no opinion on, on either of the plans. I know the council has seen these, I know it's been discussed in the public, it's been out there in the, in the domain. Some, some kind of, people might be feeling some kind of way about the, the fact that, you know, there was, there's a call for a building permit on this project. But the fact is, is that a building permit authorizes inspections of the project. Without that, you've got no one inspecting the project. This is a half-million dollar project for the town, this is taxpayers' dollars. We, we've got to do things the right way, we can't do things that, that don't follow... We've got to do things the right way. We can't do things that, that don't follow.
Isn't some of that part of a grant? That wouldn't be the taxpayers' money.
Well, it still falls under the purview of the tax dollars.
Wasn't this part of Sourcewell? Sourcewell, we got, we got in, we were in Sourcewell and then the, the Public Works and everybody else got into Sourcewell. And I think that was recommended by the attorney, that we get into Sourcewell.
The fact is, is that these are the responsibility of, of the body. These dollars, this half million dollars, is the responsibility of the body. Doing things the right way, open, honest and transparent, is the way it should have been done and we should do it. That's all I'm saying. I'll ask Dave Westland to kind of explain the matters with respect to the liability that the town would face without issuing permits. And then I turn it over to Tyler after that. Yeah, I, I think the best practice is clearly to have building permits issued so that you can have the inspection, so you can have the engineers looking at it. You know, I don't know historically, and I mean, Joe indicates that historically we have had permits issued. I would tell you historically, regardless of what you've done, the best practice is to have the, the building permits issued. You can make sure the contractors are licensed, make sure they have the appropriate insurance, those types of things. And, and there was no agreement reached as of Monday, which is another problem. So if you historically look at the timeline of what happened, there was an agreement in 2021, April, for a certain design that the park board agreed to. And then on April 11 of 2022, Adam appeared for Spawn Ranch and said, "Listen, there's been some cost increases which would result in roughly $80,000 of increases." The park board, in my opinion, was absolutely within their rights and correct when they asked him a series of questions, and it was Mr. Boersma and Mr. Bovat, who said, "I want to see," and I'm paraphrasing now, "but I want to see this breakdown. You say there's steel coming out of the new plan. How much are we saving? How much extra concrete?" And they asked what, in my opinion, were the right questions. And at that meeting on the 11th of April, Adam said, "I'll bring you that stuff in a week at your next meeting." Well, that was the meeting that was the 19th that didn't take place.
Right.
So the park board never approved the modified plan that Spawn Ranch was advocating on the 11th because they wanted to see the cost differential, which I think was the right thing to do. Where it gets off base, I think, and legally tenuous, is that a notice to proceed was issued on the 15th for the modified plan. There was no authorization to issue that notice to proceed because they hadn't voted on the modified plan. So when that notice to proceed was issued by Mr. Bovat, I don't, to Spawn Ranch, he certainly had the authority because he's the president of the park board at the time. But from a town standpoint, he did not have the authority because that, the modified design that he was approving was never approved by the park board. In fact, four days earlier, the park board had expressed serious concerns, which I believe were legitimate. And I think some of those questions are answered tonight. But then they fast forward to the 20, to this week, and they say, "Well, we're, we're ready to roll. We don't pull a building permit." And legally, I don't think, you know, if you want to say you have a contract, then you have a contract for the increased amount, 629,475, because the, the modified deal was never approved. So things were in a very tenuous situation, you know, earlier this week. And I think the appropriate thing to do is for the council to consider at this point, do we want the original agreement with the increased price, which would be a change order because it is more than 10% of the original contract? And if you look at the contract, it says it's got to be more, if it's more than 10%, we need to do, I believe they called it an equitable resolution of that, that issue. And we're certainly free to agree to that. And, and that was explained to Adam yesterday on a phone call that the council could certainly agree to 629,475 and go back to the original plan. Or, which I think, and I don't want to speak for Tyler, so I'll let him talk. But the sense I got was that everybody kind of agreed that the modified plan worked better and stuck to the $550,000 price tag, so everybody was happy with that. All I'm suggesting is then that design needs to be approved because it is a different design than what was approved a year ago.
So Tyler?
Sure. So I, and Adam, he's on the line, I believe, and he can jump in anytime here. So I, I was very concerned when I heard the initial design was changed. But after discussing the changes with Spawn Ranch, I felt comfortable with that option. More importantly, these revisions have been well received in the local skating community that were instrumental in helping us finalize the initial design. I'm not a, I'm a skater, but hearing that skaters were supportive of the revised design and that it was going to be constructed within the initial budget certainly eased those concerns I had.
Okay.
So I have a quick question on this. So I'm just, I'd like to seek some clarity on this. So the original contract, did it indeed have a clause where if there was a maximum of a 10% increase? Like that was the least, that that would be the worst case scenario for the town? If, and I understand we are in an inflationary period, but is within this contract that we were capped at a 10% increase in cost?
So.
Because this is more than that.
Yeah, so let me know. So what the contract says, and, and this is Spawn Ranch's form agreement, okay, that when, so I'm not being critical of anybody's approval of this, but, but they, they give you this agreement and you either sign it as is or you don't.
Understood.
Okay, so the verbiage is, "Any increase in the price of raw materials anticipated to be used in the scope greater than 10% occurring after execution of the proposal shall constitute a material change condition necessitating an equitable adjustment to the contract price." So I think when you look at that, that's saying if it goes up more than 10%, you're going to pay us more.
That triggers, okay. That's what I want to understand.
Right. If it goes up less than 10%, then the way I would interpret that is that that's kind of their problem. All right? The fact of the matter is, is that the information provided.
Is there a metric for measuring that then?
Yeah, so that's a great question. But the information provided to the park board on April 11 was that steel had risen dramatically, right, and, and so had concrete. So in order to hold the price at 550, they were going to take out some of the steel and increase some of the concrete because the, the increased price of concrete was not as much as the increased price of steel. So you'd be actually being able to hold the price with this design. And I'm oversimplifying what was.
Understood.
About a 30-minute conversation. And that prompted, I think correctly prompted, some of the park board members to say, "Well, wait a second. Show me the numbers of what, you know, how much did steel go up and, and how much did concrete go up? And by pulling this out, how much are we actually saving?" And I think that's when Spawn Ranch said they would have those numbers by the 19th. And I think Joe indicated we got them today. But at least some of those questions, I think they attempted to answer, and I think Adam's on the phone.
Yeah. I'm here. I'm listening. Available for answers or comments if you need me.
Hey, Adam, how are you? So my question is, and I'm, I think it's, you know, inflation has definitely taken hold over the last year. So what is the, where is the, or what is the metric for measuring steel cost or your overall material cost that shows it's up more than 10%? That verifies that fact?
I think we, yeah, so first of all, pardon me, I'm, I'm actually driving to this meeting right now. I'm from Midway Airport and I'm 11 minutes away, so I probably won't make it in time. But.
You never know.
Maybe. So if I can stall for another 11 minutes. No, just kidding. I don't, first of all, it, it was a, it was a team effort from Spawn Ranch, high, high ups to put all this information together. And I don't have it in front of me and I didn't memorize all of it. But take the price of raw materials from the date that the, the contract was signed, and you can kind of go back and calculate the increase over the last 12 months.
So were we provided those numbers? I just want to have some kind of verification. We're talking a $76,000 difference? Or 74,000?
I, I'm not, there, there's a lot of information we, we've sent to you over the last week or so, and a lot came today. As far as specific dollar amounts on specific raw materials, I'm not exactly sure if that is in your packet or not.
So what it says here, Adam, in the letter dated 4/21, is that had we begun construction in fall of 2021, we would have had a 9% increase in the original contract amount, which would have been $599,500. Building in 2020, that would have added an additional 5%, which brought that total project cost to 629,475. So if the Town Council wants to move forward under the original plan, the change order is at 79,475. What staff, their recommendation is, is that they approve the 550 with the revised value engineered revision that was presented.
Correct.
So I guess my question is, if we give you authorization and approve this and you can get started soon, do we have any kind of assurance that we're not going to have another 10% or greater increase? I mean, can we figure that the 550,000 is going to be adequate to complete this job?
Yes. That's why we went through this whole process to value engineer and, and, and essentially make the park, in the process, make the park safer, better. Yes.
I think a point worth mentioning is if it gets deferred or delayed, I think the cost would absolutely increase.
Well, one thing I got, only question I have, they said that the, the savings that we have is by taking out the steel. Now, is that taking out steel or the concrete? Because I'd rather pay the increase in price because steel is what gives the strength to the concrete.
It's not a rebar and reinforcement steel. It's the, it's actually the skate feature steel, our pan features. There, there should be a diagram that.
I got a diagram here in front of me. I just, all I heard was steel was removed in place of more concrete. But.
Well, I'm sorry, we didn't clarify that, but it's not.
They took out those stairs.
Okay.
And then they're going, that ramp at, down here, they're taking that, that out. That's going to leave.
Structural, structural steel.
Said that that's better if they did it that way. They got more room to come down there, Mike, to, to skate and stuff, so.
That's fine. I just, the only reason I asked is that he just said.
Do we have any skaters in the room that give us some guidance?
Yeah, we already got it. He spoke earlier.
Yeah, they basically took out that curved ledge feature there, which had a lot of steel coping along those edges and made it a concrete bank. And then, as you were saying, the overhurt quarter pipe, this is the bottom left end corner, that was removed as well. I believe there's probably steel coping on that that was removed as well.
Would you skate at the revised park?
Absolutely. If anything, I think the new design improves the flow of the park. It does have less steel in it and some features were taken out. But I do think it improves kind of the flow of traffic throughout the whole park. I think it's a good decision to stay at that price point. It's a good revision of the design.
Well, I'm really not in favor of dragging this thing out and seeing the price go up. I like to see this project move forward. Are there any other concerns about the $550,000 project?
No, I don't have any concern about it. I just wanted to make sure.
No, I think it was all approved. I'm, I'd like to go forward with it too.
No, it wasn't approved because at the last meeting, they had questions and concerns about the same questions that we addressed tonight, so. All right. Brian, your thoughts, comments, any concerns?
So far, everything I've heard is acceptable to me. I don't know much about skate parks. However, the people that do seem to be in agreement that the new design is totally acceptable, especially the skater that's here. And he's nodding his agreement, so I'm all for, on board with it.
So Mr. Westland, you think we're okay to go forward with this?
Yeah, as it says on the agenda, you need, I mean, I suppose there's a third option to defer it, but the two options are the change order for the additional 79,000 or a motion to approve the value engineered revised design, which holds the project cost at 550,000.
And then, was there a question on the contract?
No, I, I think now, once you have it on record that you're approving the revised design, that's what they've proposed.
Okay.
You've locked that in.
Also on there is a part where we waived the fees of the permits.
Yep, that needs to be part of the motion as well.
Okay.
So do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the value engineered revised design, holding the project not to exceed $550,000 and the permit fees will be waived.
Okay, is there support for that?
The town's going to expect it.
Sorry?
I'll second that.
Okay. All right. Questions, any other questions or comments? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. That is approved five to zero. Thank you, Adam.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Very, very much.
Are you almost here?
I'm four minutes away. I'm coming.
You can turn around. You're safe.
With a, with a big smile on my face.
Time for dinner.
Buying dinner? All right.
I can, thank you.
Okay. Move on to item 10, reports and correspondence. Town Council, Wayne?
Skater system, it's just about finished. They're working on it now. They're going to fine tune it, but basically it's all, all done. And that's for the waterside. And then I gave you guys something about water meter, water meter prices. That's gone up, but we need maybe to act on that pretty soon. We, we're talking about a stormwater fee on the, on the water bill. I would, that was, that was brought to my attention by somebody and I said, "That was probably going to happen." But that, with that, it would help pay for stormwater projects. And there any update on the, on the Kmart property?
Nope.
And, okay. And then, let's see. Oh, ordinance 1623, let's get back to that. When, that was brought up at the beginning of the meeting. 1623 was brought up when some of the people on that board were Jorgensen, Hastings, Forbes. And that was because, I think at the time, Jerry, you were up here asking questions and everything. And they didn't want to hear you talk and ask questions, so that's why they got that limit. And I think the first meeting, when, when Jorgensen was on, it was like, they didn't limit all talking. Like, well, how do you do that? I mean, and, and you were a proponent for, you know, fighting that. And now you flipped on that with the 1623. It's, it's not limited to 30 minutes for everybody to talk in the room. I, I think that as elected officials, we should have these people come and talk to us and say, "You're no good. We like this. We don't like that." If you're man enough to go to their house and ask for their vote, then you should be man enough to listen to their opinions when they come to a room. And as long as it's civil and it's decent, you have to have thick skin in this job. So I think when, when they were asking about that, that's the real reason why 1623 came in, in the play. But then I think, you know, it was you and maybe Councilman Blazak, that they were upset along with everybody else that was backing you. And it's a shame that people just can't come and give their opinion. And it's, you know, voter apathy now. You can't get people to go vote sometimes. Again, it, it's not transparent, so that's why I think 1623 came into effect. And I think that's, uh, I'm, I'm, no. Well, we voted to give the planning director a, a raise, our building and planning director. But the same Town Council, most of us voted not to give Beth a raise. The only full-time employee in this town that didn't get a raise. That's a shame on, on you guys. But yet we're going to give 8,200 and some odd dollars to somebody in our building department. What happened with the shrine? I mean, there's no permit there. I mean, what happened? We, we, we need, yeah, but we need to have a building and planning department that is more active in doing what they're supposed to be doing. And we brought that up even when we were running, that the, the previous guy, he was working on, on the ordinances and we never got anywhere with it. And then my last thing, I, I got my book. This is a, a book that Tyler did for the Parks Department. You did a fine job, Tyler. And my last words to you is, you helped this town so much. You did a lot. And what happened? I'm sorry to see you leave, but you did a great job. When you walk out of here, keep your head high because you deserve it.
Thank you, Wayne. Mike?
I have nothing.
Mike?
We had our Economic Development Committee today. We are moving forward with our Freedom Fest. Uh, for all the residents know, we're gonna have two bands. Uh, we're gonna have jumpy's and entertainment for the kids. Uh, the ICE Arena has agreed to open up during those hours and it'll have additional things for families. Uh, there's gonna be a beer garden run by Malt Brothers along with fireworks that night. And we're working on possibly getting a helicopter to come, uh, and other really nice, uh, events. Uh, they are also working very hard at getting sponsors to offset the cost. Um, I just think it's gonna be great events. And, yeah, I want to thank them for their hard work.
Okay. Brian?
All done for the evening.
Okay. All right. Um, yeah, I don't have anything other than maybe respond to, you know, some of Wayne's. Nobody had, everyone had an opportunity to speak tonight. I think the, um, the, the reason to limit to three minutes, 30 minutes, um, was out of respect for everybody that came to hear other parts of the meeting. Um, I think the town residents make it pretty obvious and pretty clear what their thoughts and what their ideas are. They've got the right to say that. Um, I respect their right to say that and, um, I will continue to do so. Um, that's all I have. Beth?
So I just quickly want to go back to the, the building permit thing because this is new to me. I've been here since 2016 and I personally, and I'm not saying that it hasn't happened, but I've not heard of the town requiring a building permit for itself. So when you talk about waiving the fees, what fees off that building permit did we waive? What are, what are the fees for a playground that are waived off that building permit fee?
The cost of the project because.
But have you read the building permit ordinance? It talks about residential, commercial and industrial. And then it lays out the fees. So I'm, I'm trying to understand, what fees did we waive?
I'm assuming the, the fees that the town would have to pay based on the cost of a building project.
But it's not residential, it's not commercial, and it's not an industrial project.
So you're saying.
So what, what fee structure is incorporated in that ordinance that we're waiving?
Sure. All I know is.
I mean, did we put a.
I, I went down to get a building permit to remodel my building.
But, but that's different. But you're remodeling a structure.
Based on the price of the project.
Right. But you're, you're, you're improving, you're making improvements to a building or a structure. So I guess, I think, from a town perspective, it would do everybody well to understand what this process is because we've got skater going on. That's electrical. Were there permits pulled? Are we, are electrical people, are they going out and doing that?
So I would hope so, that we would have inspection of even our own, uh, even our own town-owned property, that we would have an inspector to make sure it's done right. I don't think I have a problem with that. And I, I'll, you know, I think that your point there of waiving the fees, if there isn't any, we're waiving fees that don't exist, still a net equal. I mean, yeah, we, I don't think that we, I don't think we should be charging them a fee for a permit that we're simply just gonna pay back. It's kind of silly to do that, right?
Well, that doesn't make any sense.
So having it zero makes some sense. So I do like the idea of having the protection of having things inspected and making sure it's right. And if I heard you right, Dave, that's, this, that's one of the things that, that is.
So you guys do plan.
Now is fixed within that.
You plan to put a stop order then on skater and Founder's Park and everything else that's currently underway that haven't had permits pulled for?
Think that it should be inspected. I think that's a good idea.
So, so you'll do, I'm just saying, you're gonna follow the same, you're gonna follow the same process for all the other projects that aren't currently permitted?
Well, I don't know that. I don't have that answer, but I know we were, we, we stopped an order, we put a stop order on a project that wasn't approved.
So that, that's what I'm getting at. That's probably the real reason.
I didn't do the stop order.
Why not necessarily the building permit thing?
I can't answer that. I didn't put the stop order on it, so.
Okay. So I.
Right.
Okay. At the direction of somebody, the building permit just didn't build, uh, John Gill didn't just walk down there and put a stop order on something. But neither here nor there.
Put the stop order.
Neither here nor there, it doesn't matter. But so I'm just, I guess I would request on behalf of at least my department or, and every other department, if something is changing here, we need to sit down and figure out what is going to be required to receive a permit and what isn't. Because this kind of just came out of what the town employees would say, no, I mean, we do road improvement projects. Are those being inspected by our, you know?
Our engineers often.
The engineers actually inspect the roadways.
But do they receive a permit? Are they grading? Cause do we have grading permits? I mean, this is just gonna be a slippery slope.
That's all great questions. Dave, what do they do in other towns? Would they issue permits?
Typically get permits.
For every.
I don't know what happens here. I mean, like historically.
It makes sense to do it. So I think, yeah, I think it should be uniform and it should be best practices. I'm with you. So great.
Perfect. Okay. So, yeah, well, we'll need to talk about that. Other than that, um, I don't have anything else.
Okay. Joe?
Thank you. Um, at this time, I would like to say thank you to Tyler for his service to the people of St. John. I want to wish him well in his endeavors. I know he's gonna do a, a good job in the town of Chesterton. Um, they're very lucky to have him. Um, we will be moving forward to, um, the interviewing process sometime after May 9th for that position. Um, also, and finally, we will be holding a special meeting and a study session on May 11th at 7:00 PM here in Town Hall. That's all I have.
I just wanted to make sure. I normally don't speak up on stuff like this, but I just want to make sure, Wayne, you mentioned that those salary ordinances were approved tonight. I just want to make sure for the record, they were not approved. They were, the motion to consider was four to one. So you couldn't then move to adopt them because it was not unanimous.
Right. That was on 1786, F7?
Yeah, you said, you, in your.
Building and planning.
In your report, you mentioned the building and planning and the, uh, the ordinances 1766 and 7. Because they went four to one.
It has to come back again.
It has to come back again. So I just want to make sure you.
Right.
You're on the same page there.
Right. I understand that. Yeah. But thank you.
No, cause you, when you said they were approved tonight, I was concerned that you or someone else would believe that that was adopted.
Okay.
And it wasn't.
Right.
Okay.
And then I, I know, I know we're all done with the meeting. Basically, we're almost ready to adjourn.
Just about.
Adam, Adam came in. Do we, does he have to speak? Shall we let him speak? Okay. No, I just, you know, because you did, you did make it, you were in Atlanta or whatever, you flew to Midway and then you flew here down the expressway. So I would say if you wanted to speak and say something, fine. If not.
I'm fine with that.
Good. Thank you.
I just want to acknowledge, um, some of the hard work that went into getting the project developed, contracted. Obviously, we, there were some speed bumps and hiccups. Um, ultimately, um, thank you, council, um, the previous park board for all their work that they did. Um, Wayne, been a huge support of this project. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Tyler has been absolutely fantastic, level-headed. Um, it's been stressful on our end. He's calmed, uh, kept everything kind of calm. And, um, I just want to say thank you, Tyler. Thank you, council. And, um, we, all we want to do is build the best skate park that your community deserves. And we're ready to do it. In fact, our crew lead is here right now with one of our other crew members, Mikey, and they're ready to start tomorrow. So I just want to say that. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Time frame on completion?
Time frame on completion. I just, let us, let us get the soil grubbed off.
Ballpark, you won't hold it.
Ballpark is usually, I usually use a safe, uh, eight to 12 weeks.
Okay. That's, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And thank you for coming out tonight. Um, Joe, do you have anything else?
I just want to give Tyler an opportunity to talk. That's why he's on the agenda tonight.
I'm saving that for last.
Yeah, exactly. That's all, that's all.
And Mr. Westlin, anything else?
No.
Tyler, you have the floor.
Sure. I just want to thank Adam for being here. It was planes, trains and automobiles for him today to, uh, to be here. So I appreciate him and, and, and working with him through all the, uh, obstacles that the projects had. So I'm excited to see that going forward. Um, an update on Founder's Park, we, we received an updated target construction schedule just this afternoon. Um, they're gonna be on site tomorrow, uh, starting prep work for the shelter and also installation of the pavers around the shelter. Uh, we have a, a meeting scheduled with them to, to discuss the project going forward. Um, but within two weeks, they'll also have the, the stone placement for the port in place, safety surfacing. And, uh, right now, it's looking at a targeted July 4th completion date.
Okay.
Uh, the Gates Park Playground, so that was approved at the April 11th Park Board's special meeting. Uh, the board reviewed multiple designs, uh, design options the prior month and combined elements from every option into the final design. Uh, so we foresee that being a very popular playground, um, especially considering the, the substantial need, um, for one on that side of town. Um, currently, that project has a eight to 10 week lead time, uh, which would be an, an additional two to three week, um, uh, time for installation. So that's looking at, at a July completion, uh, construction schedule as well. Uh, a few updates on the, uh, on some programming. Uh, so our farmer's market opens this Sunday and that'll go every Sunday, uh, through October. Um, we'll be distributing some free market shopping bags while supplies last. Uh, we have new vendors on board this season. There's actually a waiting list for vendors. And if you go to the St. John Farmer's Market Facebook page, there's a pinned post at the top of the page that has a list of our participating vendors for the season. Uh, we're also gonna be updating, um, some signage for the market and that's gonna go up this Friday. Our Patno Park Family Garden, so 33 out of the 39 garden beds are rented for the season. And, uh, that open date got delayed a little bit just given the weather we've had. Um, we're looking at a Monday, May 2nd, um, uh, opening date for the season. Uh, just a few, uh, a few other items. So our seasonal positions, so we have several kids returning from last year, which is great. And we're looking to bring them on board around Memorial Day. These are our seasonal maintenance positions. I'd like to thank, uh, Suncrest Church, um, for partnering with us on the St. John Serve Day that took place this last Saturday. Um, we had the, a local Cub Scout troop help as well, but we had park, uh, projects going on at Gates Park, Civic Park, Heartland Park and the Community Garden. So we had volunteers spread out all over town. So I appreciate, uh, their support. Uh, one note on ARPA funds, I know there's gonna be a committee, um, assembled to decide how those are spent. A few ideas for, for some park projects, given some of the improvements we made to, um, uh, our property at the gates. I think permanent restrooms will be very much needed. Um, I mean, that's gonna be a very popular location with the, the skate park and then our playground. Uh, we also talked about paving the entrance to Heartland Park. Um, if you've been through there, um, it's, um, it's, it's a needed project to say the least. Um, pickleball courts is also a project that's been on our, the, the, our park board's radar for all the better part of a year now. Um, so again, I know there's gonna be a lot of projects put into the hopper, but, um, I think those are three, um, at least candidates for, for park projects. I want to thank the, the Public Works Department, Clerk Treasurer's Office and Town Manager's Office for helping assume some of my responsibilities during the upcoming transition period. I think that, um, you know, this process will underscore the need, uh, for additional staff for this department. And I'm sure the council will receive numerous staffing requests from other departments, but I'm fairly certain every other department is better equipped than parks to handle a transition period for its department head. And for my successor's sake, I just hope the council takes that into consideration, um, going forward. And lastly, I just want to say that I'm grateful, um, to have been in a position to bring the community together with facilities and services. It's, it's the best part of working in parks. I've had the opportunity to meet a lot of residents the past few years, from Lake Hills to Silver, Silver Leaf and Gates to Edgewood and all the subdivisions in between. There are some truly wonderful people in this town, many of which have appreciated the efforts our department has made the past few years in addressing deferred maintenance of our facilities and also spearheading a few exciting new amenities that will be heavily utilized and enjoyed for many years to come. And while many St. John residents are appreciative of the progress that has been made in recent years, they are quick to point out, and rightly so, that additional park improvements and amenities are needed. The common concern I've heard from residents since I started here is that they have to seek out amenities in neighboring communities because they're not available in St. John. St. John residents are running into each other in downtown Griffith or Reader Park in Shererville or Bulldog Park in Crown Point or any of the several indoor recreational facility options the neighboring municipalities have to offer. I would just implore the council to reflect on that. St. John residents in large part are leaving town to get a sense of community elsewhere. And I'm certainly biased being in this line of work, but out of all the challenges the town is currently facing, the lack of indoor recreational facilities and large outdoor community gathering places should either be at or near the top of the list. And that's been difficult to see, being in this position, to see so many residents that are underserved in that regard. And like I mentioned, I'm fortunate to have been in a position to meet and enjoy the company of several residents. I am hopeful the council, in the face of all the town's challenges, prioritizes park projects and resources going forward and creates more opportunities for our residents to meet and enjoy each other. Thank you for allowing me to be here this evening.
Well, thank you and the past park board for the things that they've done in the past two years.
Yeah, I echo that. I mean, when I started, there was a, we had a one-man park department. And, and one of the things that I was pushing for was to get, um, some programs, um, things put together for the residents. And you were, um, a very important part of that. And you've improved that. And you've taken our parks department from one level to a whole nother level. And I, and I thank you for that. I appreciate your efforts. I appreciate all the work that you've done. I appreciate the groundwork that you've done to lay out, you know, what can come on and what needs to be done in the, in the future. And I really appreciate that. So, uh, for that, Tyler, I would like to say thank you as well.
Absolutely. I'd like to say the same. And I, I will take to heart, uh, your comments you made within there about, uh, you know, putting additional dollars into our, into our park system, getting a more robust area where we can have people gather and more community. We get a stronger community sense where our, our residents do not have to leave town in order to enjoy those type of things. So, um, I'm gonna make it one of my priorities to seek additional dollars for our parks. So anyways, uh, I, I enjoyed working with you for, for the few months that we did. I wish you nothing but the best in Chesterton. We're gonna miss you. You know, God bless you. I just, I wish you all the best.
I wish you well in Chesterton.
Okay. With that, we go to item number 11, which is adjournment. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Second.